Okay, so we'll move on to a update from our school start time ad hoc committee.
We're about to budget development update.
Oh, sorry. Budget development update.
Well, we're, as I mentioned to you in my email, I left my right hand at home, so we're going to have to pick up that item at our meeting on the 27th. But again, since our governor won't be giving his State of the State address and his executive budget until the 21st, we'll be in a better position to know what those numbers mean by the time we get to the 27th. So I don't think we'll really be too far behind, if at all, in the final analysis. And, you know, when the guy's doing the work is laid low, we don't, I don't have very much choice in the matter, so that's going to be the shortest budget development update we've had. We'll have all budget season, guaranteed.
Yeah, so just to clarify, so, you know, I realized that the governor's State of the State address was moved, and so you expect his budget to be, I didn't, I wasn't, I didn't link the two always in my mind, so, so his budget then, executive budget will come out shortly after that?
Well, typically, they come out within close proximity of one another. However, I read just today that he has announced that his State of the State will include his budget.
I see.
So he's going to do them at the same time, which I'm not sure that's an issue of expediency, so much as a not-so-great omen. I'm a little concerned about that, but, you know, we'll, we'll see what it looks like.
And that's the 21st?
That's the 21st. That's what, that's what he's announced. He's going to give that combined address to, to the state, so.
Okay.
Again, for better or for worse, we should have a pretty good idea, knock on wood, as to what the worst-case scenario was going to be. Hopefully, we'll have, we'll have some, kind of, taking off from Richard's very thorough presentation just now, hopefully, we'll have a better idea of what some of those high-cost services will generate in terms of high-cost aid. Usually, it's not been a big-dollar amount, but when the costs are high, then we expect that that's going to drive some, some additional aid to, to support that. So, again, it's, it's still going to be a shot in the dark, but it'll be, it'll be more of a shot in the dark than we have. Right now, we're totally clueless as to what the revenue picture might look like, so we'll have a better idea, we should, by, I mean, on the 27th.
It'll be all that new money for when they close the gap.
Uh, yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure. Yeah, it'll, it's shaping out to be a very interesting budget season in Albany, though. We'll reserve judgment until we see what actually goes down.
All right, so now, we'll move on to the school start.
Yes, we can do that.
I think I can report, since I did the minutes this time. The group met, this was the second meeting of the ad hoc committee, very informative discussions with people invited in to share some of their first thoughts about possible ways to approach the question of changing the school start time and what some of the ramifications of that might be. So we spoke with Tom Burnell, who gave us a very helpful overview of transportation costs and how they might be impacted by looking at changing, either flipping the two routes or really what we spent most of our time talking about was consolidating bus runs, and this is something that is being considered by other districts as well for a single trip. To consolidate bus runs would require using more buses, but for less time, so there is some possibility of this being cost-neutral or even cost-saving. Of course, one of the major changes that this would represent would be having students of all ages riding at the same time on a bus and also making staggered stops at the, at the two different campuses. We explored some of the sort of challenges that might come into play if that were to take place. And we also talked about the need to keep the bus run to a reasonable time. Obviously, nobody wants to have their child on the bus for, you know, an hour and a half or whatever, so we affirmed our sense that we would want those bus runs to remain as they are now, about 40 minutes at the top or maybe 50 minutes. Ed Davenport, who was with the group as well, suggested that we analyze ridership on the buses this spring, try to get an accurate head count and see how the buses are being optimized in terms of transportation patterns, how many empty seats are there and so on, and how do sports and other kinds of activities, after-school activities, impact ridership. We did talk briefly about how bus transportation to Bosse's might be impacted by a change in school start time, and currently, Bosse's programming starts at 8:33, so clearly, there would be some mismatch if we were talking about a school day starting at 8:00 or 8:30. Sports buses were definitely something that we had to think about, since sports buses are an add-on to the transportation network we already use. If we moved to a single-tier system of busing, we would need more drivers, and this would be something that would impact other districts that are talking about this possibility as well. So whether or not we could cooperate with another district, that was sort of an open question. Diane also asked if we could restore the late bus, because we lamented the loss of the late bus, so busing in general was on the table. Ed Davenport also spoke to certain issues that the literature on changing school start time seems to suggest has some correlation to amount of sleep, so the amount of tardiness in general. He presented very thorough data to us compiled with his colleague, Mark Burg, about, you know, how much of a problem this is, how late we're talking about when students come late, and what it boiled down to is there's a very, very small number that have a sort of issue with chronic tardiness, and he wasn't really sure he could see how changing the school start time would necessarily impact that. He also spoke to the question of some claims that are made about students being sleepy when they drive to school in the morning, and to the best of his knowledge, there had been really maybe one or two accidents that perhaps even looked like they would have any relationship to that problem. So he didn't see driving and lack of sleep as a, as a real issue for us here in Reinbeck. Steve Boucher joined the group and spoke with us very thoughtfully about how athletics would be impacted by starting the school day later. And I should just say that in all of these conversations, we were asking, what happens if we start at 8:00 and what happens if we start at 8:30? And there really did seem to be different scenarios that would play out depending on which time we would be talking about. The major challenge facing the sports program, of course, particularly in the fall, is a lack of daylight hours for students practicing after-school sports practices, particularly modified season goes fairly late because they have to have a certain number of hours practice, in practice before they can compete. He had calibrated this from mid-October sunsets of 6:20 PM and gave us a really thoughtful overview of, you know, exactly where the, the time crunch would come. There are certain contests that take place about an hour away, so if you factor in travel time, you're definitely going to run out of daylight hours. At the same time, he certainly gave us many other thoughts about ways that the schedule could perhaps be recalibrated, perhaps contests that are further away could happen earlier in the season, perhaps contests that needed to be taking place in the dark could be taking place in, at locations that have lights. So we did sort of explore all of those different possibilities. He did also point out that many districts in our area, both in Dutchess County and I assume this is also true in Ulster, are having this same conversation. So we are not in a vacuum here. These are challenges that are being faced by many districts at the same time. At this point, he concluded it would be more feasible to consider a 2:45 dismissal than a 3:15, but certainly, he showed himself to be very open to exploring all kinds of different possibilities. So I think, as I already mentioned, the real questions that are emerging, at least at this point, are, does the literature support, and actually, we were all given this wonderful Pediatrics journal article, so I think that there's actually something in that that speaks to this question. Are the health benefits sufficient if one looks at an 8:00 AM start time to make such changes worth all of the energy and effort? Or is 8:30 really sort of the gold standard? I don't think anyone arrived at any conclusions about this, but certainly, that was one of the kind of questions that went through all of our conversation. Could the change be cost-neutral or even cost-saving? That certainly seemed to be a possibility that remains on the table. And then, how would these changes impact after-school activities more broadly? We just talked about sports, obviously, but we didn't explore other questions. So Ed Davenport is planning to speak with his colleagues and, you know, gather more information about this. When we meet again, the ad hoc committee will hope to speak with the principals of chancellor and monthly mental school to get their perspective.
So Tom probably, Tom is not here, so I don't really know if you can speak to this, but this seems very different financial analysis from, say, 12 years ago, which was that a single start time would cost more money. And I don't, maybe Tom could speak to that a little bit another time or at your meeting, what has changed, and whether it's our bus contract. At one point, I think some of the contracts might have had minimum numbers of hours for drivers. I also, at some point in the industry, finding drivers was difficult. I don't know if that's still true, so that's why the bus companies would have a minimum number of hours, because in order to hire people, they had to know they were going to work X number of hours a day instead of one quick run in the morning and one quick run in the afternoon, but can you get a bus contract to actually do that? So, I'd just be curious how that economic picture changed over.
Well, I think all of the things you mentioned are, are in play now. I mean, we did recently sign a new contract with, with Durham, and one of the things that Tom, you know, with the encouragement of TASS, our transportation consultant, was change the, the way the hours are billed so we could potentially save some money by having those buses driving less, less time. Our population's somewhat smaller than it was by, when you saw Richard's numbers. I'm not sure it's any easier to find bus drivers these days, so I'm not sure that that's a factor in play. The other, the other thing that, that's in play is that for, for many, many years, in spite of the fact that folks from the State Education Department will tell you different if you ask them, for many years, they were telling us, you had to have a seat on a bus for every kid, period, whether the kid rode or not. And then several years ago, all of a sudden, they, they had this epiphany and announced to us that, well, we've never had that as a, as something you had to do. Now, you just have to estimate the numbers of students on your buses, and as long as you can accommodate the, the numbers of kids who usually ride your buses, that, that's okay now. So potentially, even though we'd be in, you know, in somewhat of a difficult situation if we had to evacuate the school building in an emergency, Dale Lettschuk put three kids to a seat instead of two in, you know, in an emergency, yeah. So things have flexed a little bit on that front, which, which might make it a little easier to get to a, a cost-neutral or even perhaps a cost-savings scenario. So, yeah, some things have changed over the last 12 years. That may work to our advantage if, if we want to go down the road, even if it's only for cost savings, even if it has nothing to do with changing the, the school time, so. So we do need to set a meeting date. We are meeting with the, with the elementary side of the, of the shop to get their input, especially in terms of things like flip-flopping.
Yeah.
As well as combining K-12 students on a single bus, so we, we continue to grind away. And we do have to set a date for that next meeting, but at least we have an agenda for that next meeting.
So, so when you meet with the elementary, I just, you haven't proposed other options, right? Like, if the high school started at 8:00 and then the elementary started, like, move everyone?
Right, right.
You know, right? Like, no?
Nothing has been, no.
Nothing, it's just sort of, when we, because they, they'll move backward. You know, if everyone goes, then they're going at 8:00. That's like a shift for them, that's might be the negative.
That's correct.
And that certainly is what came up many years ago, that was not.
Right. And we did sort of talk at some length about, you know, the different changes that would be entailed with any of these scenarios, and we don't want to minimize how, you know, it would require a lot of thought by all, all members of the school committee, so.
Great, thanks for, thanks. And just as an aside, we did set our next meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's January 30th at 12:30.
Wow. Cool.
Diane remembered. I didn't write it down, I didn't write it down.
Now, now they don't feel quite so bad.
It was me, I didn't put in minutes.
I just want to reiterate that, you know, I think, no matter what decision comes out in the end, if we decide to make a change, it really has to be cost-neutral.
Yes.
At minimum.
It was.
And, you know, cost-saving is great, but cost-neutral has to be, is a must, I think. Okay. So let's move on to a mid-year review of the 2014-15 board goals.
Well, you, you have the goals in your, in your packets, such as they are, and I think the way we've done this in past years is to just have a conversation about what's been happening, what hasn't been happening. That's why we've got your table for things.
I'll give it a shot.
Sure.
So I think, generally speaking, our communications goal has been the most successful thus far, and we're only mid-year. I think we've done a tremendous job with our new Twitter accounts and trying to get all sorts of information out to the public, and imploring the public through these meetings to come and talk to us, and I am hearing through the grapevine, and we hear in the communications notes that through the Twitter feed, the teachers are getting really excited about submitting pictures of their kids in their classrooms, and that's promoting parents' calling to find out more about what's happening, and that seems to be, you know, getting this wonderful dialogue going, which we were all hopeful would happen this year. So, you know, congratulations, since that's really, that's a great one. CDEP, on the other hand, is, is not quite as far along, having our first meeting at the end of January.
On the 30th.
On the 30th. That's good. On the 30th. And as we'll discuss in a little bit, the celebrating educational progress, we'd like to open that up to sort of the full board's thoughts about how we can more effectively do that, ways we can use the website, ways we can use public meeting or any other kinds of venues to promote what's happening with staff and students. Larry Anthony is a great addition. I don't know what, what that does for our financial viability or the kids actually jumping on to buy lunch, but the financial, he probably has more about that.
When we were developing the goals for this year, one of the, one element of the conversation that we had was with you, Joe, where you said that you used the goals that the board developed to basically set a path for your administrators and the staff, the district staff, in terms of how their functions should operate coming year. So have, what's your experience been of how these goals have worked in that process?
Well, and I think they, they mirror the overview that Laura just sketched out, and I think especially in terms of the communication goal and, and the food service goal, I think we've made the most gains there, not only as a board, but in terms of my own goals and beyond that, in, in terms of having the board, the board goals serve as, as a, I'm not sure what the word I'm using, I'm looking for, but kind of send a message to the staff that this is something that we, you as a board, value, and the communication piece is a perfect example of that. I mean, I'm, I'm not, I feel like I'm, and I don't want this to sound the wrong way, but I feel less like I'm twisting arms to get stuff than maybe I was even at the beginning of this year, because I think people are getting positive feedback by seeing their stuff, and it's not just the Twitter account or that, that's kind of the quick and dirty, hey, give me what you got. But, for example, I got a, I got a, a little, I think, I think it's the draft of a, of a letter home about some activity in one of our buildings, I won't mention which one, so my response to that was, so write it up as a, write it up as a, you know, a press release and we'll put it on the website, and, and the response wasn't, well, I don't have a lot of time to do that. The response was, yeah, I'll get back to you, and then in about half an hour, I had something, and I just cut and paste it and threw it up on the main page of the website. So, I mean, people seem to be actually more interested in wanting to use those various vehicles, so that's good. And I think that's, that starts to influence the culture in, in, in the district where people aren't seeing that. I mean, I'm, you know, I'm not being flooded by 100 items for, for Twitter or for the website, but a lot more people are saying, yeah, or just taking the initiative and saying, you know, here's something for the, for the website. Okay, great, because I don't have the time to be sitting there writing, Nordo, I think the board wants me to be spending my time writing press releases, but the people who are doing these activities, you know, if you're going to write a letter to parents telling them about an activity, it's easy enough to craft it as a press release and send it along, so I'm seeing more of that happen. People are sending me stuff unsolicited, saying, hey, here's some stuff, here's some stuff, so, which, again, is good, because we don't have time to traipse around the schools, saying, give me what you got, when people are starting to say, yeah, and here's pictures, and, and, yeah, and I already vetted the pictures, so all the kids in the pictures, you know, that we have a release on file. I mean, I'm loving that, because I can't use pictures unless I'm sure somebody has said, yeah, we've, all the kids in this picture, we have a release for them, so it's okay to use that publicly, they're just kind of doing that. So it's, that's kind of building, and it's, it's been actually a pleasure. And, and, excuse me, in terms of, you know, our food service program, again, I think, as you said, I'm not sure what the bottom line's going to, how it's going to translate to the bottom line, but just in terms of, of a positive attitude and a kind of a can-do attitude of, yeah, we can do this, yeah, we can do that, yeah, we'll do that, it's refreshing.
Can I just follow up on this?
Yes.
Are any of the, are there any areas of the goals where you would say that implementation is not going in the way that you would like to see it go? Laura mentioned CDEP, just getting started.
Yeah, I would, that's, that's, that's been a slightly heavier lift than some of these other things, for various reasons, which, which I'll share with the board at some opportune moment, but that's been of the four, that's, I think, been the slowest, and I think in terms of the, the third district goal, I think, I think next, next board, board meeting, I'll get a good sense of how much of that stuff you really want to have on your plates, because, and I think it'll be a good process, because as a board, you need to let me know how much of, because this stuff takes time, and it will take time on your meeting agendas, and at some point, I think we'll, we'll find a happy medium between the time it takes to acknowledge those things publicly and how much time you have to want those things acknowledged publicly, but, you know, I think we're, we're kind of tracking towards that, so. And it's only halfway through the year, so, you know, this is a, for, for all of us, it's kind of a mid-course dipstick.
Thank you.
Do I see a, can I hand it up on this side? Deirdre?
Yeah, so a couple of my comments are, I just want to highlight, being on the communications committee, that the process of developing our new website, I think, has been really terrific. Steve Jensen's really meeting with lots of different groups in the district, teachers at all grade levels, administrative staff, administrators, to get feedback on what will make a better website, so I think that process has been really good, so I look forward to seeing that. I think a question I have about that goal is that we really, we're trying to focus specifically on, you know, on lots of areas, but also improving specifically parent-teacher communication. So I'm just wondering, in my mind, it's like, how do we know whether that's improved or what else can we do to improve that? Can we use, you know, 140 characters once a week to remind people to contact their teacher if they have any problems, or, you know, we can maybe, as a communications committee, look at the website before it goes live again on sort of, are we doing things to improve that? And maybe even, I think we did mention, meeting with the RTA Subcommittee that some of us met with last year, where this issue was discussed. Maybe we should think about meeting with them again to say, like, you know, where are we at with this, people seeing any improvements, you know, to get feedback from teachers. So that's a comment I have out of communications. I also would just, from my perspective, encourage that the curriculum committee make this board goal, I know it's listed on your, in the notes from the last meeting, one of the, like, year-long goals, I would say, maybe move it up in your agenda possibly?
CDEP.
CDEP.
No, the, the curriculum committee should make, bring this issue, goal two, have a discussion at the curriculum committee. I mean, it's where the board, it's where that goal is located from a board perspective, so that would just be my recommendation to have, you know, that might be the place where Joe could really talk more thoroughly about what some of the obstacles are. Yeah, and I, I know, the last point I really wanted to make was, I think we talked about this last year at the end of the year, and I think it relates both our district goals and Joe, your goals is, we talk about how sometimes things happen during the year that take over a lot of time, and we should acknowledge, recognize that, you know, articulate it, so we're not at the end of the year feeling dissatisfied by X, Y, or Z. And one of those things, I think, I just want to acknowledge now, is school start time, from a board perspective. You know, that is actually something this board has taken on, Joe, created an ad hoc committee, and now is reporting out every, every board meeting. We didn't, we didn't, that wasn't on our plate when we made our board goals, you know, maybe it wouldn't have been if it was there, but I just want to acknowledge that that's a whole ad hoc Subcommittee that's, you know, we should acknowledge is taking up some board time here, as well as Joe's.
Can I, can I speak to that? Because that's actually the one thing I wanted to add around communications as one of our goals. Even, well, not even, we have had these, starting last year, we've been having these coffees where we have modest but committed participants in conversation with us, and one thing that's particularly impressed me about that is that people have come prepared, people have thought deeply about issues of, of importance to them personally, but also that sometimes have resonance, right, with kind of larger questions that we may not have put on our agenda, and I think this is exactly where I sort of see the ad hoc committee emerging from. So I agree, I think it's important for us, in setting our goals, to have a moment for reflecting on ways in which we're responding to our stakeholders and our communities and in a meaningful way, while keeping track on the goals we really don't want to lose sight of. So I think at this sort of mid-year point, it is, it is really important to ask ourselves, you know, how we're doing on all of them, so I think having that flexibility as well as keeping our eye on the ball is important.
Diane?
So as far as the communication goal, Deirdre, I agree with you that the- So as far as the communication goal, Deirdre, I agree with you that the focus on this was around parents and teachers. And it's probably the hardest thing for us to kind of gauge if it's improved. I mean, it would be interesting, maybe, if the billing administrators had any input, if they've noticed anything there. I mean, I've certainly heard it around, you know, from the staff and heard it throughout the year. I just don't know if the parents are, you know, doing their part. It's hard to know if they're taking more time to communicate with the teachers and starting there. But it'd be interesting if there was any feedback there. And maybe if the communication committee, you know, throw that around, is anything more that we could do to keep that. I think the third goal, I guess we're going to talk about that with the minutes coming up, but that's probably something we could do more, we haven't done too much. I think Twitter is probably the best example of where we've done a lot with that. And I think, you know, that's gone really well. And I think that that's, you know, that's the best example. But we certainly could do more on our end goal. And the food service, you know, Larry Anthony is doing a great job. You know, hopefully, as we go to the end of the year, he'll be able to tell us exactly, you know, where we're at and why we are where we are. And, you know, we'll be able to start next year with that, with, you know, some answers. So that would be my hope there, that he continues to do everything he's been doing.
I just think that this year, and I, in my opinion, I think that, I feel like so much more progress has been made to our goals this year than other years, maybe. And I know some of them, we feel like we haven't made as much progress as maybe we would like. But I think, you know, we've made a lot of progress this year, you know, as compared to other years, since I've been on the board. So I think it's going well. So anyone else have any comments?
Okay. So let's move on to board committee reports. First is finance.
I'll leave that since I wrote the minutes. So we met in mid-December. The first item we talked about was the veterans' tax exemption. I don't think I need to go over that. The second item is important. We talked about our fund balance. And so the takeaway from this conversation, again, Tom is not here to fill out the conversation, but just as a report, that we, Tom expects that we will be creating less fund balance this year, maybe about half what we usually have. And I think that had come up previously in reports from the finance committee of sort of how we're spending, we're going to be spending more of our revenue than anticipated. You know, we're seeing some savings from the fact that fuel prices are down so much, but other items, we're using a lot more electricity because of more technology. So I think that's an important thing to note, is the technology that we're buying now requires us to use a lot more electricity, more, more time with people, more consultants to, more personnel to manage the technology. We have several, many teachers on leave, so we, the cost of substitutes have gone up. The biggest cost, then there's no DHEC holiday this year, so we're paying 12 months of health insurance on 11. But as we also know, and Richard highlighted, that our number of special education students has increased. So that budget item, we're using more of it than anticipated. And I think in terms of our purposes as well, something we need to think about as we draft our next budget for next year, is that we made a decision to, to close the, you know, make a slimmer margin between budget and revenues. And so in the context of more costs, we may want to reconsider, sort of, if it's possible, in the context of a tax cap, but it's hard to back away from that in a tax cap environment, it's going to be important for us to think about that. All that being said, you know, it was, Tom and Joe felt that, you know, we would have a clearer sense of the impact of our budget when we get the first draft budget. So in terms of actual dollars and numbers, we don't have that, but I think it's important everyone see, you know, what's impacting our fund balance. We reviewed enrollment projections. We'd done this previously. And again, at this point, the administration isn't making any recommendations for specific changes in staffing or programmatically due to sort of enrollment changes. The important thing that you can see is that while overall enrollment next year will be stable, because of the decline previously at Chancellor, both the middle school will have 30 fewer students, so that's quite a drop. We have, of course, seen each year sometimes increases suddenly in a class, in a school building. That drop in number of students is not currently, there are no recommendations to change any staffing pressure. And we meet next, February 20.
Question.
Regarding the fund balance and the sort of philosophical issue, whether you budget so that there's a larger or smaller gap, if you will, between what you're actually led to spend, what you're budgeting to spend. There was, as you probably remember, Deirdre, a pretty involved discussion over the past two previous years, when I was on the finance committee, and probably even before that, about whether it was preferable to add to fund balance at the expense of possibly enhancing programs or adding new programs, or narrowing the gap between those two figures, and not adding to fund balance, or adding less to fund balance. And when the philosophical decision was made, I guess in not last budget year, but the one before, to try to start narrowing those, you know, narrowing that gap, the thinking at that time was that we were at close to $4 million fund balance, which was probably twice as much as what the state was recommending that we have as a district. So although I, I understand Tom's concern about not adding to fund balance, and it's something that he spoke to in the past with the finance committee as well, I don't see anything in this report that sounds like, you know, an alarm bell is ringing, that there's something new on the horizon that we couldn't have taken into consideration before, that makes us rethink the determination that we previously made. If we do revisit it, it would be based on a feeling that we should be essentially saving more than we're spending. But I don't think that that's, that, that would be a philosophical decision rather than a decision based on actual need. At least, that's the way I'm hearing it, based on your report.
Well, so a couple of things. I don't think we were ever at twice the amount of fund balance as state. The state says that you can have a maximum 4% of your budget and fund balance. I don't think we ever had close to 8%.
We were close.
We were slightly above 4%, which isn't twice as much. So I just want to make sure that anyone listening to this doesn't think we have twice as much fund balance as the state has required. We're slightly above the 4%. And we have spent down some. I think what Tom concerns, and again, we can look at numbers more clearly, and we may have to draw from fund balance as revenue for next year, is how quickly numbers can change. So managing, you know, if you get a special education high-need student who needs services that cost $200,000, that's a big change. And the unanticipated cost that can, I mean, I think this year is what he's sort of highlighting, can, if we're not careful each year, you can start pretty quickly digging into fund balance and not have reserves. So you're right, this is not, in some ways, it's not unexpected, because we were trying to spend down more fund balance. I think that our, our costs, though, have increased much more than we anticipated. So this might be happening a little faster than we might. We want to make, take a couple of steps back from that. Obviously, those judgments ultimately will be recommendations initiated out of the business office, not from me or anyone around the table, but just that, that it very quickly, some things can, can switch around. And, you know, we're always reminded that there are school districts that overspend, that spend down very quickly and find themselves in some pretty deep budget issues. So, you know, I, I just want to commend Tom. I think he is a very good budget manager, and once his goal is for stability in the district. And when you start seeing numbers shift dramatically, there's some anxiety there. I mean, but you're right, it's not, it's not entirely unexpected, but the costs are, are higher than expected this year.
Okay. Meals for Finance. Okay, move on to policy. The first policy.
Policies met twice. So I have the first one, that was from the beginning of December. The first thing that we did at that meeting was work on the meal charge policy, and there's actually a first reading of that here tonight. And just one thing to be clear about that, that the meal charging policy will not, you know, we'll never have a student that will go without a meal. And it was important to make sure in that policy that that's, that's never the goal, that the student's not paying their, for their meals, that we're going to leave them without it. The next thing that we looked at was a professional development policy, and the one that we looked at, you know, was just not suited for us. So we're going to continue to work on that. And then we looked at, we kept working on our, the review of all the district policies, and the policy that we looked at, we had questions on, and that was the end of our time. So that was, that was our meeting in December.
Okay, question. Okay, move on to communications.
Do you want to do, are there another policy meeting?
We could do it either way.
Okay, I'm happy to. Okay, well, I took those minutes. We met last week. Oh, my birthday, I sort of heard that. Okay. So we, we picked up where we had left off, Policy 4511, which is textbook selection and adoption. And we, we flagged this one because frankly, the way that it was written, we couldn't figure out exactly what policy required in terms of adoption of textbooks that were, were being adopted less than five years after a previous textbook for the same grade level and/or subject matter was being adopted. So at this meeting, we went and we read the statute. And statute's clear. It says, if you're adopting a textbook in the same subject area as you just, as you adopted, adopted one less than five years ago, you have to have an approval by the board of three-quarters of the board, of the members of the board. So we've asked Joe to take that into consideration, to try to revise the language of that policy, to make that clear. And we expect to see that by the next meeting. And then we continued our review of the policy manual. We, I think most of this is self-explanatory, and I don't want to take up a lot of time talking about it unless people have specific questions. But the one that I do want to highlight is Policy Number 4730, which is the last one that we talked about this meeting. And that's the policy on homework. And the reason that I want to highlight it is because really the issue that the policy committee got involved with talking about is that the, what the district's policy on homework is, as opposed to how the policy reads, is not really within the committee's purview. But it's something that we're not sure as a committee is an accurate reflection of what our policy actually is. And the policy is pretty, pretty much states that homework's going to be assigned regularly in all classes. And, you know, in some cases, it's going to be assigned daily. And we're just not sure that that's really what we as a board want or expect now at this point in time, as opposed to, you know, 2002 when the policy was adopted. So what we want to do is to open the discussion to the full board, to, and realize this is going to be determined tonight, but to get everybody talking about what the board's policy is on homework. We know that that's been discussed in curriculum. Curriculum committee did not recommend a specific policy out of their discussions. So, you know, we, as the policy committee, are happy to take the board's direction as to what they want the policy to be. But right now, there's a policy on homework. And whether that policy is actually the board's policy is something that we do not know.
I don't have a policy in front of me, so I actually, I haven't looked at it. So I can't really comment.
So maybe the thing to do would be for the next meeting, to put this on as a discussion item, and maybe Joe can circulate that policy.
That'd be great.
And we can talk about, or at least begin the discussion about what the board's policy should be on homework. Maybe it'll, the discussion will result in our determination that the policy as written should not be changed. If that's the case, then fine.
Laura?
I can say, just from a curriculum perspective, from last year, I did go back and read those notes today. And our discussions really came because somebody was concerned, a parent might have been concerned about, you know, why does my kid not get any homework, but the kid, you know, my, my kid's best friend gets a ton of homework, and what does that mean about my, you know, all of that kind of stuff. So I think our discussion in curriculum really centered around the fact that it was the purview of the teacher to determine how they wanted to exercise their right to assign homework or not. And that's much more prevalent, I think, at Chancellor than it is in the middle school and high school, just based on the rigor of the work. But I'm not sure that we were thinking of it from a policy perspective, as opposed to a communication issue, which was, if you have questions about your kid's homework, you should talk to your teacher, because they're going to be able to express to you, you know, their philosophy on, on giving homework. But that the handbook at Chancellor is very specific about, you know, if your kid's in fourth grade, your kid should not have any more than 40 minutes of homework, generally speaking, those kinds of things. Well, I'm not really sure we've thought about it from a policy perspective, but happy to do that.
Diane?
I remember the discussion we had then. And the policy, I mean, it does state that it, you know, that the teacher would make that determination. But, you know, most of our policies, they're either mandated, or they're based on some kind of educational law. This is just a policy that a board, you know, that's sat around this table, determined at some point. So it's not based on anything else. So it should still currently reflect, you know, what's going on here. So, you know, when I was reading it, and I was looking at it as if I were like a new hire to the district, you know, what does the board expect of me as a teacher? And, you know, when you read it, you know, you'll kind of see that it, you know, it's kind of going in the direction that there should be a lot of homework, and often. And so that's something for us to, you know, really talk about if that's, if that's what we think, you know, that it should be.
Lisa.
And I'll just, I'll just add that, you know, the fact that there's no law or regulation requiring this policy gives us a freedom that we don't necessarily have in all other areas of policy. Since we're not mandated to have a homework policy, you go to support decide, we don't want to have a homework policy and really give much more autonomy to the teachers to make those decisions.
At some point, because I likened this topic to this, this school start time topic. I mean, this, this could be a Subcommittee type of, there's a lot there. And, and that topic, along with things like school start time, you know, could very well be a philosophical third rail in, in any school district. So I think it, I think it, it warrants some, some serious thought and discussion. And I think at some point, we probably want to get some other voices in the conversation vis-à-vis our administrators and our teachers. Our teachers might not really relish the idea of having carte blanche. Some of them might, some of them might. I mean, it's, I think it's potentially messy topic, but it's, it's one that we, we should dig into at some point. So I, you know, it's out there on the table. I think we, we should go at it the same way we've started going at the school start time, you know, deliberately do our research, have those discussions, inform it with the voices that need to take a part. And it, and I, you know, my gut feeling tells me we'll And I, you know, my gut feeling tells me it'll be, it'll be a while till we get to that point. But it should be on our agenda to look at. But it's raised.
Diane?
Joe, speaking of research, I remember from curriculum, I believe there was research that says that there's no correlation between homework and... Do we have that research still?
I think Marvin told us about that.
Or did Marvin tell us about that?
Yeah, well, that's... That's my third rail comment.
I'll just say there's a lot of, you know, there's language in the policy about, you know, the homework should be relevant and all sorts of words like that, that, you know, are kind of, you could add philosophical meanings to some of those things, too. So I think it's important, I think it's worth reviewing to try to think about what we really wanted to say.
Okay. Communications.
So we continue talking about the website redesign and just following up on what's already been acknowledged by other members of our committee. It's been a very consultative process. And lots of different groups from faculty to administrators and administrative staff are being consulted. And we did get into some very kind of granular discussion at a certain point of what kind of Q and A feature we'd like to have on the front page. And actually, those different groups of people had some very concrete suggestions about how to, not only just kind of like how to make it work well, but philosophical questions about, you know, who's responsible and what kinds of answers are appropriate in a feature of this kind. We talked a little bit more about how we archive the materials that will be being featured on the new website. There will be an attempt to gather more feedback from parents and others who use the website through the BLPTs and PTSO. Guidance is still, I think, going to be consulted about how to look at their page. And my understanding, and of course, this meeting took place on December eleventh, and my understanding is that very soon we'll be seeing sort of like, quote, real content as we look at the prototype before it goes live. And obviously, 2015 is when that should be happening. We talked to our Board of Ed Goal Number Three, efforts to publicly acknowledge and celebrate achievements of students and staff. And much of what emerged in that conversation is sort of similar to, I think, what's happening in policy, which is we felt there needed to be a conversation taking place at the full board level about what it really means to acknowledge and recognize achievement and the depth of experience that's being provided in terms of academic excellence in the district. We acknowledged how, say, the principals' reports that happen monthly are fantastic kind of snapshot of all the things that are happening. But if people don't watch the meetings, they may not have access to that material. How could it be broken up? Could it be featured on the website? Could there be other ways to share this information more broadly with our public? We talked about how there are ceremonies and public presentations for extraordinary achievement. But are there ways to really sort of acknowledge and celebrate the things that are happening every day in our classrooms and in our community? So that gets into the issue of how to use the website to the best possible effect, as well as perhaps other means of communicating and celebrating accomplishments. Perhaps having podcasts or brief write-ups of student work in a dedicated spot on the site might be helpful. And Deirdre actually came up with a great idea. This is what public education looks like. So we just began sort of brainstorming about how we could gather some of that material. Joe did point out about how teachers are already becoming very active in sharing this sort of day-to-day snapshot with us through Twitter. So maybe it's really about how do we go from that short-form reporting in real time to something kind of in between that and, you know, the big public ceremonies we have for honors and awards. So if we could get feedback about how to do this from the rest of the board, that would be extremely helpful to us as we move forward. I don't know if now's the time where people are going to have tons of ideas, but...
I think, just because one thing, you know, the concept has arisen of having people do presentations at board meetings. And, you know, as Deirdre notes in the, you know, the question of like, what's, like, what are effective ways to do, is that the most effective way to acknowledge various accomplishments of various kinds? And also, you know, we can see, say, from this meeting, it's ten of ten, and we still have quite a few items on the agenda. You know, do we want, is it the most effective way? And then really, you know, how often do we want people to come make presentations that will extend our meetings for quite some time? So it may not be tonight the best time to get all the feedback. That was sort of one of the considerations.
I saw Diane first.
I mean, I love the idea in the website of being able to highlight some of the things that go on the district. You know, Twitter is an excellent way, immediately gets out what's going on. I would still say it's a good idea for, to invite people here. This is the goal that we put out here. You know, it does take time to thank someone, to write a note, to say thank you. It does take time, would take time for a meeting. And I'm not saying we should have, you know, fifteen students come in and get presentations, but, you know, one or two, or we could figure out something that wouldn't take, you know. But it's worth the time. They spend a lot of time doing a project, or a poem, or an essay, or whatever they've done. And, or a staff member that, you know, we just heard tonight about, you know, something that they've done, you know, just to take the minute to thank them. And, you know, it's another way to get out there to our community. And I think it's, you know, it's worth the time to do that. It was a goal that we put on there, and I think it would be worthwhile.
Lisa?
I agree. And also, I'd like to, I'd like to make reference to something that we don't really talk about much here, but I know that is important to the community. And that is how fortunate we are in Reinbeck to have had in the past couple of years, a local press back covering activities of the community. And a large part of what is covered is activities at our school. Just in the past couple of issues, we've seen a wonderful photographic piece about the high school band concert and a piece about one of our seniors who is being featured for his athletic accomplishments. And in the course of the interview, talked about how wonderful he thought the engineering class that she's taking has been. And, you know, how enriched he's felt by that. So, you know, that's an area where I think that we should make every effort to, you know, partner with our local press, both to give them things to give their readers to read about and also to ask them to help us develop the information that would be useful for them and helpful for them. So, you know, speaking to the president of the board, to give that some thought and maybe, you know, come back to us with that or, you know, talk to your editor about that possibility.
Okay, anyone else?
It's very helpful.
Curriculum committee?
Those are mine. So at our most recent coffee with the board, a parent came with a question about the 10th grade English reading list and with a concern that basically was about a question about what Reinbeck's values were around teaching issues of diversity and gender. The 10th grade English course is British literature, and the reading list is full of male authors, no female authors, though the summer reading includes Jane Eyre. So we got into a discussion with Marvin about sort of what it is that a reading list represents for an English class or a curriculum. And it's such an incomplete picture of what happens in the classroom. Marvin has acknowledged, as have all of the high school teachers, that the English curriculum in the high school needs some updating and perhaps more female voices need to be brought into those reading lists. But the more complete picture is the conversation that happens around these stories, these plays, these poems that they're reading, and the conversations that help the students explore issues of inequality and gender in the time of the writing of these pieces that they're reading. So the English curriculum is continuing to be worked on. The consultant's in and talking with the teachers. And they are going to show us something wonderful, hopefully, within a year or so. But we didn't want anybody to walk away with the feeling that we were talking about a bunch of dead white guys all the time. There is a much richer conversation happening in these English classes beyond just the reading list. The curriculum work that's happening at Chancellor unfortunately was slowed down for personal illness and things of that nature. Marvin's got the curriculum documents back on his desk and is working through the bits and pieces of all of the requirements of the new curriculum. The teachers are still working really hard to find the sweet spot of integrating the units of study across social studies, science, and ELA for the nonfiction text standard. And he's hoping to get those curriculum documents to us within a month or so. Middle school and high school curriculum work is still happening. A middle school consultant will be in this month, and the high school is still in progress, so stay tuned. We will certainly have the Chancellor curriculum done much before those other two. Breaking news, there is, the revised social studies standards have been adopted in New York State. The high school global courses will be affected, but the requirement for graduation continues to include Global One and Two, Rick. The Regents exam, however, will show the most effect. The test will only cover the period of seventeen fifty to the present. But what Marvin did point out is that the state has moved units and topics across grade levels. So what it's going to mean is that we're going to have to go back to K five social studies curriculum and take a look at what we need to redo there in order to prepare students for the middle and high school courses. And the next-gen science standards have been approved by New York State with a twist. We're going to, New York is going to New Yorkize them. You know, all late-breaking news. But this will have major impact on all science education, K through twelve. As soon as Marvin has more information, he will update the committee. He also wanted to let us know that he met with the Foreign Language Department at Middle and High School. And the department as a whole has come to the idea that they'd like to take a new look, a fresh look at course alignment through, from middle through high school. What they're hoping to achieve is creating an opportunity for more students to have an extended exposure to language through their high school career. You know, there are those kids that take the minimum requirement and then dump their language. There are those kids that excel, and so they stay with it longer. We're trying to get those kids in the middle and the kids that tried to drop it earlier and see what we can do to make a curriculum that is going to entice and enthuse those kids to stay a little bit longer in the language program. And then we talked about the Commissioner's Regulation 154, which Richard did a great job speaking to. So I don't, unless you have more questions, I think our notes cover what Richard said in terms of our ELL teacher, the one lone person who's been handling our whole ELL population. So we'll continue to grapple with those issues and see what happens. Oh, and our next meeting is the end of this month. And Steve Jensen's been invited to talk to us about the technology plan.
Okay, Diane?
The foreign language, so is this also possibly aligning it in the middle and high school to make it easier for it to extend foreign language in the middle school?
That's part of the discussion. And Marvin is keen to get an education, a foreign language education consultant into how to...
Yeah, I think we're, as part of that process, I think he's looking for input from the current Foreign Language Department as to whether that's a direction they would support.
Other questions or comments or quick... Okay, Audit Committee?
Yeah, so the revised minutes are at your place. Small changes, but the, just really briefly, we talked about the process for getting a community member on the committee, volunteer application form needs to be posted online. Our deadline, we've been thinking of January 34th, but with Tom being out sick, obviously, we're going to have to change that and publicize that, et cetera. And we talked about our relationship with our internal auditors. You know, we're not required any longer to have an internal auditor. But we talked about that relationship becoming more of a consultant on best practices in certain areas, including payroll procedures. And so we were thinking about trying to meet with someone from that and talk about how they can provide us with those services. Our next meeting is January 22nd.
Okay, what's your comments? Okay. Move on to the SEED survey regarding the sole supervisory district of Dutchess County and BOSEs.
Well, as hope springs eternal, I'm hoping that this is a rather quick agenda item since I've already forwarded you that information. But for the benefit of people who are perhaps reading about this in the local press or seeing this broadcast on Panda, I'll kind of recap and let everybody know that Dr. John Pinoyer, who's been the district BOSE superintendent for, I believe, fifteen years, announced to his board his intention to retire, effective fairly immediately. And they accepted his resignation and, I believe, it was effective the end of December. The State Education Department's process, anytime a BOSE superintendent vacates his position, and typically it's a retirement-type of situation, is to conduct a study as to whether that position ought to be filled, quite frankly. And it really focuses on the ideas to whether the BOSEs that is now without a leader is configured geographically, physically, in a way that the, that the structure, the infrastructure is meeting the needs of the component districts. For example, if our kids had to travel by bus for an hour and a half to get to the BOSEs, the tech center, you could make a pretty compelling argument that it's too far-flung geographically and that our kids are not being well-served. As you're aware, I received about five days after Dr. Pinoyer's resignation, a letter from our esteemed, I'm looking for his title here, Deputy Commissioner Dr. Tangora, asking me to provide a detailed study on my opinions about how it's working and to provide that by December 31st. And also to consult with my Board of Education, which is impossible in the time-space continuum within which we all live. So by later that evening, all the superintendents in the BOSEs had gotten an email from Dr. Tangora saying, I guess that was a little too aggressive. So you can have until the end of January. So being a good soldier, I placed this on your agenda to at least make a good faith effort to provide you an opportunity to weigh in. My response to Dr. Tangora, unless you direct me otherwise, will be pretty much what I had sent him already in a letter back in December, which is geographically, logistically, the BOSE structure works well for our kids. You know, our kids are able to attend a tech center, you know, within twenty minutes or a half an hour from the homeschool, which I think is eminently reasonable. And we're pretty much at the... Uh, and we're pretty much at the, at the northern end of, of the, the BOCES district, and, uh, essentially just hire the right person and move on. I don't see any reason why we should be shipping our kids over to Ulster BOCES or, uh, you know, up to the Capital Region BOCES or whatever. I think, actually, I think we've got a good number of school districts and a, uh, and a good structure. Uh, I think it's just a case of having them hire the right leader to, to continue to lead. If you have a contrary opinion to that, I would appreciate hearing it, and I would want to include that in my follow-up letter to, to Dr. Tangora, but, uh, I also wanted to be able to tell him that we had at least an opportunity to weigh in on that, so. Here's your big chance.
Laura?
Um, just a quick comment. I don't, I don't think you should change your point with Dr. Tangora at all. I just have, um, a question about, uh, school districts' ability to drive the kind of candidate that you want to have leading the BOCES.
Well, that is, uh, that is an entirely different, um, question, and they're not asking us about that.
So the answer is no, we have no power?
No, 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 I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that. I would only say that that's not their interest. Their interest is doing a, uh, a, a study on the efficacy of the structure of the BOCES and whether they should hire somebody to continue to run that structure, or they should chop it into little pieces and send districts hither, thither, and yon. That said, uh, we, uh, we met shortly after Dr. Pinoyer announced his retirement and was, was in absentia at the next meeting of the county superintendents, at which point we, we had a fairly, uh, robust discussion about what kind of role we wanted to play in the process, uh, especially as, uh, 15 years ago, there was, uh, there was no role for the superintendents of the component districts in that process, uh, much, much to our dismay, unfortunately, or fortunately. I'm the only, I'm the last man standing from that, uh, from that search. But that's okay. We all decided we would like to offer our services to the BOCES Board, because the BOCES Board conducts the search. It's just that the commissioner, of whom we don't have one currently, uh, has the responsibility of vetting the finalists and, and blessing the finalists, so the local BOCES Board, as long as they, uh, appoint one of the anointed ones, uh, then that, that will be acceptable, because that person does represent the Commissioner of Education as well as the, the local, uh, component districts. So, uh, I was, uh, you know, be careful what you wish for. Uh, I, I was tasked by my colleagues to craft a letter to the BOCES Board, uh, along with Dr. Handler from Pine Plains, and I think we have a letter that, uh, says what it needs to say, that I will be distributing to the other colleagues in, in, uh, colleague superintendent's, and we'll be passing that on to the, uh, to the BOCES Board. You know, what they decide to do with our offer of assistance is, uh, is anyone's guess. So, I mean, feel free to attend a meeting at the Dutchess County School Boards Association and tell your colleagues, oh, uh, of whom the new executive director is Lori Rich, uh, and your former colleagues, and encourage them to embrace the offer of, of assistance in the process. I think it would quite frankly be very important for that to happen, and it did not happen last time, and I think that was unfortunate, actually.
Would you be willing to share your letter with us?
Oh, yeah, of course. Yep. So that's kind of where we're at in terms of input, but that's totally up to the, they, the BOCES Board has no obligation to, they can run their search the way they want to, just like you have that, uh, you know, that prerogative as a local board to run a superintendent's search the way you, you want to. But we at least wanted to reach out and say, "Hey, we're willing to serve in any way that you feel we can be of assistance, uh, in the process." So, keep you posted. Yeah, I'm glad to share the letter with you. That's where we're at.
Any other? All right. Move on to our comment section. We have good news. Deirdre?
Uh, yeah, I just want to share that, I think it was two or three days ago, um, the Church of Messiah had put a notice up on the Rhinebeck Community Forum, uh, about that noting that, um, they serve their food pantry right before Christmas, served over 100 families, and they would have run out of all their food completely at the holidays, except that, um, the next day the Volkley Middle School came with, you know, a whole mess of donations that the students had collected. And, um, in the notice, it said, you know, "If you know a middle schooler, please say thank you."
That's nice.
But I thought it was just important to, um, you know, acknowledge, in the spirit of acknowledging accomplishments, this is not, you know, an academic achievement, but an act of generosity that is so important for the community. So, um, it was very gracious of the Church of Messiah to make a note of that in this forum, um, and really just a great, um, show of generosity on the part of our students and their families.
Okay. Other good news? Lisa?
Um, just briefly, I alluded to this already, but I wanted to, uh, to say again that the, uh, the winter high school band concert was really outstanding, a great performance by everybody.
Laura?
As was the middle school, um, band concert. You know, I might be biased, but I thought the sixth graders did a great job. The seventh and eighth graders always do, but the sixth graders in the winter are always a little tough. They did a great, great job.
Okay. Other good news? Okay. Old business? All right. Seeing none. Uh, we have another opportunity for public comment.
I guess, since I'm the only one here, I guess I gotta say something.
More than well.
Well, a couple things resonated with me. I know that that definitely resonated in my house. School start time, um, that's a point of, of some consternation, uh, you know. I have kids in both, uh, both schools, you know, so, uh, in one, you know, two, two kids on the, on the early bus and then, and then on the, on the late bus, I mean, that's, that's, uh, you know, that's an hour that, that I could be late perhaps, you know? So, you know, that, that, that definitely speaks to us, I think. Homework, um, consider homework reduction. When you're thinking about this policy, and if, if that's a policy, homework reduction is kind of a movement, is a movement of what, what, for this, you know, like they outlawed in France, which now, uh, is there some opportunity for that here, you know, that, uh, to think about that? I think that's another cause for some contention in my house. You know, if, if others on the A L rule, choose often, you know, up until 11 o'clock, uh, it's not just once in a while. So, is there some way these kids more space, you know? So, I don't know, those are a couple of things that, well, another thing that, that, when I've heard about the website, um, don't forget that the schools are being, you know, the site, um, and I see my daughters, you know, choose often, plus, so, make sure you get that, so, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Other?
I have a couple of quick others. Any of you who are planning to go to the Rhinebeck, uh, to the state of Rhinebeck dinner being sponsored by the Rhinebeck Area Chamber of Commerce, please let me or Mary Ann know, like, tonight if you can, uh, along with your dinner choice. Unless you want peanut butter and jelly, we'll, we'll give you, just like our cafeteria, we'll, we'll give you PB and J if you don't choose an entree. Also, I wanted to bring to your attention that the flyer that I put in, in your board packet regarding the ELAA Taking a Stand project has the date of February 5th, 2014. Unfortunately, you've missed it. But they are going to be doing it again this year, probably on the 11th, although that's, that date has not been set in stone yet. However, you will have an opportunity at your next board meeting, under the, uh, under the category "Be careful what you wish for," uh, we will have a presentation from DK and some of her students regarding that project. So, uh, just fair warning. Uh, they'll do a wonderful job, I know. And, uh, finally, I wanted to, uh, take the temperature of the board as to whether you want us to start to set up meetings with our three local legislators sometime this February, March-ish. Uh, we have done so with various levels of, of success over the last several years, but if, if it's the board's interest that at least a group of us meet with our legislators, we should start setting that, that up soon. Otherwise, it'll be April and they'll have approved a budget and we have not too much to talk with them about. So if there is an interest there, and do that again, we'll start setting that up. So, that's, that's what I have for you this evening.
Laura?
Um, I will go to the chamber dinner.
Okay.
And I would love salmon, please, Mary.
Salmon? Okay.
Um, and if you would relay my thanks to Ed and guidance in the BLPT about the thoughtful work they did on the issue of class rank and, um, the memo that, that you included in the flyer was really great.
Great.
Appreciate their taking.
And, and Ed will be here at our next meeting, so if there are any follow-up questions, he'll be, I'm sure, glad to take your questions, so.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other items of other? Okay. All right. We'll move on to the action items. Uh, is there anyone who wishes to remove anything from the consent agenda? All right. Seeing none. I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the following consent agenda.
So moved.
By Deirdre?
Second.
By Lisa. All is in favor? Tenamis, that motion passes. I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve as a first reading the consideration of new board policy number 8530 cafeteria meal charges.
So moved.
It's by Deirdre?
Second.
By Lisa. Any discussion? All is in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, so I was just wondering, uh, just a, a thought, if the committee of board would be interested in adding, um, anything to that, um, policy that might just say, I mean, it's characterized in some ways as, you know, like, talk about like children forgetting meals, but I don't think that that's the primary, like, I think there are also issues about people's ability to pay or not paying their bills, whatever their personal situations are. So I was wondering if, uh, because I'm sorry about responsibility of students, I don't think we afford that amount owed to us because kids just forgetting. So I was wondering if we might want to just say something in there that was like the school, you know, look, you know, parents should contact the school to work out, you know, addressing outstanding balances, or the school wants to partner with parents about working out outstanding, you know, some way that sort of opens the door to saying like, you know, "We want to work with you about this." It's not just about the kid, right? Like, just a thought.
Lisa?
Well, I mean, what, what doesn't appear in this policy, but I think we may have addressed in prior, uh, policy committee minutes, is that, um, in, in our discussions of whether to adopt a policy like this, um, it's been clear that the administration, particularly the business office, um, makes pretty extensive efforts to reach out to, uh, the parents and guardians of students who are in arrears in terms of charged meals, um, and that, since Larry Anthony has joined us, um, he has taken on that function to some extent as well. So, we, we did not view the purpose of this, uh, policy as being, uh, intended to help people find a way to get in touch with the school, because that's not really where the problem lies. The problem lies in people, and it's a small number of people, very small number, who for reasons of their own and various reasons, or who've discussed with us, um, either cannot or do not pay arrears in meal charges. Um, I don't think that the administration would ever take the position that they would have a discussion with somebody who wanted to pay, but who didn't have the capacity to. But for people who are just not paying, we saw this as something that we wanted to have to tell the community that this is how we're going to be proceeding from now on, whereas before, we didn't really have a policy on it. It was all kind of up to the cafeteria people, which isn't really appropriate or fair to them, fair to the district. So I'm, I'm, I don't necessarily think that, I, well, I recognize your point about forgetting to bring meal money not being the, the, the issue per se. I don't think that it's necessary to open up this policy to, um, sort of invite people to reach out to the business office. The business offices reach out to them, and they're just, they're being unresponsible to the business offices outreach efforts. That said, you know, if people think that we should revise the policy to eliminate the reference to forgetting to bring meal money, I don't, I don't think we should.
A piece of information here, the, the last paragraph, "The school district shall notify all parents," so you, everybody can read it. In that notification, is there in fact, uh, an invitation for parents to kind of talk to those who would be in authority?
Well, this is news, so we don't, we haven't even done this.
We, we don't?
There is no policy currently.
Well, whether there's a policy or not, do we at the beginning of the year, I'm new here, do we at the beginning of the year communicate with the parents in general? Have we over the years communicated with them about the meal program and?
Yeah, there's a big, there's a big package.
There's a packet that goes home and it has the forms, if you need free and reduced lunch, or how to, you know, paperwork.
And do we invite them to counsel with the people that run the program in that packet?
Well, they have to do that to participate in the program.
Free and reduced, not.
Right, right. No, you're, you're right.
And that's, that's separate, it's free and reduced. So there's a lot of information that's required by the state on free and reduced lunches, but we don't know, I don't know that that's, uh, that, you know, certainly not the free lunch, but the reduced lunch programs are not, might be part of the problem or not. You know, I know that Tom's had said to the finance committee that they've done a better job this year, the office of really identifying families that are eligible or that they think are eligible, making sure people get that information for free reduced lunch. That being said, you may be ineligible for free reduced lunch and still have, uh, paying lunch, though. So, um, you know, I totally recognize what Lisa said, the, you know, how this was generated. The problem and strength to identify, just in my mind, thought, you know, and I, I'm certain that the, the business office is doing what it can to resolve financial, uh, concerns that parents have in paying it. But if the rest, you know, if there's not, it doesn't have to be a big issue, but, um, it was a, just a suggestion to offer that in policy, which then is of course always there regardless of what the particular circumstances are in a year.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Okay. All is in favor? See, that motion passes. I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the list of additional emergency conditional substitute teachers and non-instructional staff for the 2014-15 school year.
So moved.
By Deirdre?
Second.
By Lisa. No discussion. All is in favor? Tenamis, that motion passes. I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to adopt the following resolution, whereas the negotiating team for the district and the Association of Non- the Board of Education in order to implement the funding of said agreement, now therefore be it resolved that the Board hereby ratifies the memorandum of agreement between the district and the association of non-instructional employees, ANE, covering the period from July 1st, 2014 through June 30th, 2018, and authorizes the funding of those monies necessary to implement provisions of the 2014 to 2018 collectively negotiated agreement. A copy of the memorandum of agreement shall be incorporated by reference within the minutes of this meeting.
So moved.
By Deirdre?
Second.
By Lisa? Discussion? Diane?
I'd just like to congratulate Joe and Tom and the ANE negotiating team on working together to improve this.
Yeah. Thank you. And I just want to ask a point of order. Do we have to have a roll call vote on this, or is it just a regular vote?
Sorry, I have a story.
Good question.
I don't think that we did for the teachers, too.
Okay.
I don't remember what I'm going to have.
I don't know. I don't imagine so.
Okay. So all is in favor? Janamus, that motion passes. I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint additional 2014 CLS before-school enrichment program instructors, see attached.
So moved.
By Deirdre?
Second.
By Lisa? Discussion?
It's 2014-15? Did you say 15?
2014.
2014-15, yes.
Okay.
Okay. All is in favor? Janamus, that motion passes. I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint additional 2014 CLS before-school enrichment program instructors, see attached.
So moved.
By Deirdre?
Second.
By Lisa? Discussion?
It's 2014-15? Did you say 15?
2014.
2014-15, yes.
Okay.
Okay. All is in favor? Janamus, that motion passes. I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to resolve that substitute nurses will be paid at the daily registered nurse or licensed practical nurse substitute rate based on the substitute nurse's certification status effective January 1st, 2015.
So moved.
By Deirdre?
Second.
By Lisa? Discussion? Okay. All is in favor? Janamus, that motion passes. I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to resolve that substitute nurses will be paid at the daily registered nurse or licensed practical nurse substitute rate based on the substitute nurse's certification status effective January 1st, 2015.
So moved.
By Deirdre?
Second.
By Lisa? Discussion? Okay. All is in favor? Janamus, that motion passes. I have a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of discussion of the employment history of a particular person.
So moved.
By Deirdre?
Second.
By Lisa? All is in favor? Janamus, that motion passes. Moving into executive session.